Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special call meeting to order, Derrick County School Board of Education, October 11th, 2022 at Cape Hatteras Elementary School. I have 401. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda?
Motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion by Marilyn, second by Susan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Have a motion on the floor to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into closed session to consult with the Board of Education Attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in NCGS 143-318.1183 and to consider confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.1186.
A motion by Margaret, second by Carl. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll adjourn for closed session.
Second.
Oops.
So I need a motion on the floor to adjourn, to close session meeting.
I move we adjourn.
Is this working?
Are these working?
Can you hear me? Can y'all hear me? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Margaret to adjourn to have a second.
Second.
Second by Mary Line, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Write a close session. Can you tell, can you hear now Frank? I apologize, Mr. Hester is actually be calling in today for our board meeting. So you want us to keep going? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order October 11th, 2022. We're here at Cape Hatteras Elementary School, and I have the time at 5:04. Item number three would be Mary Line Balance, given our welcome and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. I'm going to bring up something that some of you may not know, but it's big in our community. NAMA, the North American Marine Alliance, worked with Farm Aid to get fishermen included in Farm Aid, and it worked. And so this year, for the first time, I'm a little partial because my husband was one of them, but we had some people from Hatteras that went and represented the oyster industry as well as Aaron Ferguson's class from Cape Hatteras that were, did the homegrown village thing, and they were recognized at Farm Aid in Raleigh just a couple weeks ago. My husband was just excited because Willie Nelson was going to be there, but it was a really great experience, and it's a, it's a big leap and a big stride for the Hatteras community to have our commercial fishermen recognized as farmers and, you know, adding to the food chain because we know, especially now that flounder are coming in. So, but I just wanted to share that with you. Our, you know, Evan and Beth Dewick, fantastic job of keeping our high school kids involved in the coastal studies process, and so thank you for that. School year's going good so far. It's exciting. Glad to be down here in Hatteras. I don't have a long drive tonight. Sorry. Sorry, not sorry. But with that, thank you again for coming and join me with a pledge.
Thank you, Mary Line, for the welcome. I need approval for the agenda.
Motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion by Mary Line. Second by Joe Talbott. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Rachel, I'm going to turn it over to you for public comments.
The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about the implementation of board policy or the quality of education programs or school facilities. According to board policy, presentations are limited to three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks and insults, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. So I'm going to just take them in the order they are in the folder. Brent Liner.
You can go ahead, Mr. Liner.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brent Liner, and I am the proud father of three. Whoop.
Aaron, if you would, reset his time, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Good evening. My name is Brent Liner, and I am the proud father of three homeschool children in Dare County. I'm here tonight to be an advocate for them. The North Carolina Division of Nonpublic Education reports that there are 634 homeschool students in Dare County. If you count that in with the numbers of private school students and with the public school students, that means that 10 and a half percent of students in Dare County are homeschooled. These families have made their constitutionally protected choice to educate their children at home. Each family has a different reason for that choice. My family made that choice because my daughter has a severe immune deficiency. We had an option. She could go to public school and be constantly fighting infections for nine months out of the year, or we, she could have a comfortable living experience, and we can school our children at home. In preparation for this meeting, I review the goals and objectives and your policies on the website. Your second goal and objective is to prepare all students, all students, for college careers and life. Policy 1730, the non-discrimination and disability policy eloquently acknowledges the importance of participation in school programs and activities. Further in policy 4000 and focus on students, the board recognizes that students must be the primary focus of each school, the school district, and the board. It goes on later to specifically emphasize that students are to be treated fairly. If we focus on fairness and equity, 96% of the school board budget for this year has come from taxes, either from the federal government, the state, or the county. The residents of Dare County have paid those taxes, including the homeschooling. The residents of Dare County have paid those taxes, including the homeschooled and home-educated families. Fairness and equity would demand that the 10 and a half percent of home-educated students who fall under the definition of all students have access to extracurricular group activities and enrichment programs that are available through the public school, of which their families have funded. You make school facilities available for community use, which is the same community that funds the school system. We ask that you make your school activities available to the students in Dare County who are homeschooled and home-educated as well, under the same spirit. Finally, policy 4120E already allows homeschool students to participate in JROTC programs if available. We would simply ask that you expand such a policy to allow homeschool students to participate in clubs, music, enrichment, and if possible, sports. Please do not leave 10 and a half percent of Dare County students without memories of some of the most important activities that take place in their school age years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liner. Mr. Liner, are you related to Marissa Liner? She's the next person on our list, but as her dad, if you want to stand with her at the podium, you're welcome to do that. I said, his daughter is going to speak, and I said that he could stand at the podium with his daughter while she presents as well. Go ahead, Ms. Liner.
Hello, my name is Marissa Liner, and I am a home-educated student in Dare County. I have been home-educated since kindergarten, and I plan to continue home education throughout graduation. I have lived in multiple places across the East Coast, and one of the benefits I have had is able, as I was able to participate in activities throughout the, through the school system. Being able to do this has sparked my love for music and art. I still play violin and do many artistic activities thanks to these benefits I had when I was younger. I believe home-educated, educated children of Dare County would benefit from having opportunities, opportunities to participate in extracurricular and enrichment activities through the school system. I enjoy drama plays, and I have participated in many plays growing up. A trouble I have, I have had to face is not being able to find any drama clubs or plays to join. Many home-educated children of Dare County might be having the same troubles as me, looking for activities to take part in, taking part in, and, and are missing out on potential talents, on potential talents they could grow. We all, we all are, we all are students of Dare County. We all should have access to the same clubs and activities and benefits. Please create a policy that allow home-educated students to participate in Dare County school clubs, activities, and sports. Thank you for, for your time, and I hope you have a good day.
Kenara? Kenara? That's fine with me. Is that your daughter?
Yes. Hello, my name is Leah Kenner. I'm 12 years old and have been a resident of Dare County all of my life. I love to play sports, but this year I will age out of Dare County Park and Rec. Many of my friends whom I have played with over the years now play on middle school teams, and eventually will have the opportunity to play in high school. While I enjoy going to games and rooting for our Cape Hatteras teams, I sure wish I could be out there with them. However, because I'm homeschooled, I will no longer get to play. I'm here today to ask for your help to make my dream to continue playing organized sports with my friends a reality. Thank you.
Mr. Kenner.
Chairman Twitty and school board members, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Rich Kenner. I'm a resident of Buxton and have lived in Dare County for 22 years. My wife Carrie and I homeschooled our four kids. You just heard from my daughter Leah. As Leah said, after this year, she will age out of Park and Rec. In effect, organized sports would then be over for her, possibly forever. Leah told me she would like the opportunity to continue playing organized sports with the school if that was allowed. I told her I would do my best to make that happen for her. As I researched this, I found that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association allows homeschool kids to participate in public school sports, but they leave it to the local education agency to decide if it will ultimately be allowed or not. Once I found this out, I contacted our local school board member, Mary Ellen Balance, and began an email correspondence with her about this topic. Board member Balance has been very receptive to me, and I am very thankful that she's not only listened to me, but also had this topic become part of today's agenda. I understand that this topic has come up to the board a few times in the past, and that there's been some question about handling disciplinary concerns. I'm not here to tell you that you would not have disciplinary issues with homeschool kids. However, I'm here to ask that you not let that stop you from allowing homeschool kids the opportunity to play sports. As the saying goes, do not let one bad apple spoil with a bunch. While my focus has been on athletics, I was reminded by my daughter Hannah that many kids are not interested in sports. They enjoy music, theater, dance, science, et cetera. While we have chosen to educate our kids at home, we would still love for them to have the same opportunities other kids have to enjoy activities that simply are not available anywhere else. Our hope is that you not only allow homeschool kids the opportunity to play sports, but also allow them access to other extracurricular activities, beginning at the middle school level. We realize this will not be easy, and this is not something you just snap your fingers and make happen. Allowing homeschool kids access to sports and extracurricular activities will come with challenges, and there will be problems that need solving along the way. We simply ask that you consider this, or we simply ask that as you consider this, you recognize that your efforts to make this happen are worth it. The homeschool kids in Dare County are valuable and have a lot to offer. They have the same hopes and dreams as other kids. Please allow them to access these wonderful activities. Over the fast past few weeks, I've spoken to many people in the community about this, including homeschool parents, Dare County teachers, coaches, parents, and who's, and, excuse me, Dare County teachers, coaches, and parents whose kids attend Dare County schools. Their response to me has been overwhelmingly positive. Some of them are here today. Thank you for coming and showing your support. On behalf of my family, thank you for your time today and your willingness to spend your time making that community a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Williams.
Good afternoon. My name is Bonnie Williams. I was born and raised here on Hatteras Island in the late 80s. Because of the great need for additional sports and recreational space for our youth and older adults, a group of Hatteras Island citizens formed a committee, and I was appointed as chairman for the approval and construction of the building of the Pheasant Center, which is a multi-generational building for all ages of Hatteras Island. Just a little history there. During that time, I was appointed to the first ever Parks and Recreation Board, and we established a priority list of needs for Dare County. Because I had already been working on the Pheasant Center construction, the Pheasant Center became number one on the list. Over a 10-year period and countless presentations to the Board of Commissioners, it was finally approved, and I was appointed to the Pheasant Center advisory board, which I served for until two years ago. Dare County has a fantastic Parks and Rec program, but unfortunately, it doesn't go beyond the age of 12, and that is the age when I first played ball, and it formed my years of who I am today. It is incredibly heartwarming seeing our children learn sports fundamentals, sportsmanship, and bonding friendships between their friends as they mature while participating in Parks and Rec sports and activities. We now see a growth in the community of children being homeschooled. My hope is that the public school system will serve this group of students that are now not having an opportunity to continue playing sports and receive the benefits that athletes and other people that participate in activities. It brings to the overall, overall health and well-being of these students to be able to participate in public school sports. I'm here to encourage open-mindedness for you, to allow these homeschool children to continue to participate in athletics and activities that carry past the age of 12, because we, as we know, these teen years are the most vulnerable years of their lives. As a tight-knit community, I've known Hatteras Island to be. I feel the need for us to come together and give these homeschool children the options of being allowed to participate in athletics and activities at our public schools. Thank you very much for your heartfelt, sincere consideration in this utmost manner.
Kelly Williams.
Hello, everyone. I just want to start out by thanking you for giving me the chance to come to you today and speak to you on this topic. I am a Cape Hatteras school graduate, and after graduation, I left to get my college degree, and in 2006, I came back to Cape Hatteras to be part of this community as a PE teacher and a varsity-level coach for 12 years. I am now a homeschooling mother of three. Within those later years of my teaching and coaching, I also served as an athletic director at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. I'm coming today to speak to you from that platform. And while I realize that a lot goes into this decision, there's a business side of this, a political side of this, there's the tracking of eligibility, the discipline management, and all of the different things that goes into this, I'm just pleading with you to try to find a way to overcome these challenges. I've always known Dare County to be progressive, and I'm asking you to be a leader across our state as a district that steps out of the boundaries of just schools and expands that into our communities, to fight for what is best for all of the children of Dare County. The real-life application that participation in sports brings to a child cannot be mimicked in your esteemed classrooms or in my living room. As an athlete, you learn what it means to be part of a team, to be accountable, and to come together for the good of each other. As an athlete, you many, many times encounter in the span of one week, wins and losses, and the highs and the lows that come from that, and the growing of your character, and persevering, and in the resilience to failure, starting that next week, coming back together as a team, to then come together for the good of another win. Instead of seeing this as homeschoolers versus public school, I ask you guys to join with us, because I can promise you with all my heart, whether you are a classroom teacher in a public school or a classroom teacher within a home, we are all fighting tirelessly to pour into our students the values and education needed to grow productive adults that will be a positive impact in the lives of others and our community and our nation. I had a love of sports. I came back to this community to serve, and I now have three children that I would also like to be a valuable part of this community. I love Dare County. I value Dare County schools, and I'm asking you to please come alongside us to just face these challenges, to come together for our children. Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
And the last commenter, Megan Vaillant.
Hello. My name is Megan Vaillant. I have two children. My youngest, Nessa, is in first grade and is part of the dual-language program here at Cape Hatteras Elementary. I would describe myself as an involved parent. I am the president of the PTO and a member of our school's sit team. My eldest daughter, Addie, is in seventh grade, and until last year was enrolled at Cape Hatteras Middle School. Since COVID, we have watched Addie struggle. Rather than continuing to watch her fall further behind, my husband and I made the choice to move her from public school to an online private school that we are supplementing with homeschool courses and a tutor, and she is thriving. In the spring of 2020, 4.5% of North Carolina households had at least one student that was homeschooling. By the fall of 2020, that number had jumped to 11.1% of households. As of May 2021, 19.5% of North Carolina households homeschool at least one of their child. North Carolina now has one of the largest, highest populations of homeschooling companies, families in the U.S. I believe that every child in Dare County deserves every opportunity to be successful in life, and I believe that extracurricular activities play a vital role in that success. The following quote was taken from Dare County Schools' website, and it states, "Dare County Schools is committed to ensuring that all of our students access the skills and curriculum that will allow them to live a choice-driven life. We seek to inspire our students to fall in love with the learning process and to become lifelong learners." Based on the numbers that I quoted earlier, you can see that school doesn't look like it did two years ago. When we refer to students, we should refer to all children of Dare County. I am here tonight to request that the Dare County Board of Education vote yes to including homeschool children in extracurricular activities that are offered by Dare County Schools. I thank you for your time and for your serious consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that ends public comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Turn it over to Mr. Blackstock. Okay. They're going to try to get Mr. Hester on the phone right now, so.
When we get Mr. Hester on the phone, if the board votes on anything, will you ask him to make sure that we can hear his vote, say his name, and call his vote?
Well, I'll call, call him out on it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Frank, can you hear us now? Frank? A little bit. I can barely hear him, so when we call for a vote, I'll have thumbs up or thumbs down. Okay. Mr. Blackstock?
Chairman Twitty, I just have one brief announcement. October is National Principals Month, and we're going to be celebrating National Principals Month in the district, but I wanted to bring that up today and publicly thank our principals, we have two here, I believe, for the excellent work that they do for our Dare County Schools.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to item seven, approval of the consent agenda, which consists of personnel minutes of September 6th, special meeting minutes of September 13th, special call meeting, and another regular meeting on September 13th, finance, and agreement between the Moose Train for renewal of a chiller of two compressors at First Flight High School.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just make one comment on the budget amendments. Just a shout out and thank you to Ian and Anna McGuinness for making sure our peer behind the high school is being taken care of. We're very excited that that's going to be rebuilt and rebuilt well. So thank you for putting the time and effort in that. It's very much appreciated in a school of coastal studies.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the floor to?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second by Woody. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Frank? Aye. Unanimous. So we have a consent agenda. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Blackstock, for reports and items of information.
Thank you, Chairman Twitty. I just have one item I wanted to share regarding our weather closures for Hurricane Ian. I wanted to thank our administration and staff for the support and teamwork that went into making our weather-related closures as safe and productive as possible. Our 11 principals provided thoughtful leadership in preparing staff and students for remote instruction. Our teachers and instructional staff made sure each student had access to remote learning in order to keep the weather from slowing down our instructional momentum. Our central office staff worked with building administrators, our finance department, and our school finance folks to make sure that all staff had safe options to work remotely or work face-to-face, and also our school data managers who had to work to make sure that our students were counted present appropriately. During these two weather events, I was able to work collaboratively with Sheriff Doug Doughty, Dare County Emergency Management Director Drew Pearson, the National Weather Service Office, and our wise and steady Transportation Director Alex Chandler. Members of the board may not realize it, but when school closures are executed successfully, it's usually because of a lot of hard work from the Transportation Director. I don't know if members of the board, or perhaps the chair, might, might recognize that information. I don't know if members of the board or perhaps the chair might recognize that information. When we finally got all of our students back to school, Alex Chandler, who's the Transportation Director, texted me, he said, "No offense, but hopefully, we're not going to have to talk for a while." We spent a lot of time chatting with each other. I have a new relationship with our principals, Rachel Benton and Beth Rooks, who worked with me very directly, and we talked pretty much through the weekend. And I was spending time looking at flood gauges and wind speeds and flood inundation mapping, and I should have just asked Beth what was going to happen so she could tell me, but I really appreciated their collaboration. And then finally, Holly King, who's sitting right over there, was available day or night. We don't currently have a public information director, but our technology director was available even very early in the morning to get my phone calls and to make sure that information was pushed out to folks the way that it needed to. So, it was a group effort. Personally, I have a new respect for superintendents who make these calls. Those that know me know I love a good weather event, but trying to weigh wind speeds and tidal flooding and ocean overwash and buses on bridges and everyone's anxiety, the safety of our students and staff had to outweigh all other concerns. And there's simply no way to do this effectively without a solid team, which this community is fortunate to have. Thank you, Mr. Twitty.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Item 9 is unfinished business, and we'll start with a discussion from last month regarding proposed change to the Dare County Board of Education meeting schedule 2022-2023, which consists of the school tours, recognition, and instructional highlights. As I said, this is open for discussion. If anybody would like to start?
This is the first time I've seen this.
It was there last month. Yep, it was there.
Georgia, isn't this the same thing that was in the meeting from last month?
What was laid out last month that we discussed was have a central-located Board of Education meeting. It was brought up then, it would be held at the Commissioner's Office on the second Tuesday of each month, and we would do highlights of each school and tour the schools at a different time. It was also mentioned to me a few days ago that we could go back and look on the second Tuesday of each month to have a tour of each school that we choose to go to that month. Say, we're going to start at 11 o'clock based on the timeframe of the school getting out, their bell time. We go through, it'd be informal tour that the principal wishes to show for us and highlights and staff recognition, but we would also provide a staff lunch as they can come in as they see that they need to, because, you know, teachers have different periods that they have lunch. They don't all break loose at 11:30 in the morning or 12 o'clock. So, the lunch will be provided for the staff, for them to go in, pick their lunch, fellowship with those, and then go back to work. And then we would leave, let's say for an example, if it was Kitty Hawk Elementary School, we would leave there around 2 o'clock in the afternoon. We would fight the traffic of parent pickup, and we would drive at Manio Complex based on our timeframe of closed-session meetings. The last two meetings, we've had a 4 o'clock closed-session meeting, some in the past starts as early as 3:00. We would have our closed-session meeting, and then at 5 o'clock, we would start our board meeting. So, in reality, we would still do the board tours, highlights of the staff, what the staff was wanting to show with us, and go from that direction.
Mr. Chairman, it seems pretty clear that the position that I think you're advocating, and my last discussion, our last meeting regarding this, I truly believe that we best serve the community when we're in the schools having meetings like we're having today, as opposed to sitting up on a dais at the Board of Commissioners. And, you know, there's money involved, and I think it's well worth the money to spend to have the people see us in this environment, to know exactly what we're doing when we're doing it. And I don't like the part that we might be confused with the Board of Commissioners versus Board of Education. We are not the Board of Commissioners, with all due respect to them. We are the Board of Education. So, even though there's some costs involved in doing it, I'm just not in favor of doing it, having our meetings at the Board of Commissioners.
Let me also say that I was asked last month to reach out, and I did so. I talked to Mr. Sproul at KDH about using their facility. He told me they would do everything possible that worked with us, but that facility is like a multiple-purpose building. We would have to give months in advance notice for a day that we could use it, because it is utilized a lot. I also reached out with Cliff in Southern Shores, but he's willing to work with us, but he did share with me it is a very small-type area, that if we had closed-session meeting, we'd have to have everyone leave the facility because they have no other room for do a closed-session meeting. And Mr. Cahoon, I reached out in Nag's Head as well, and he said that he would work with us, but never got back with me on the date, time, and things like that. So, I did reach out to those three different towns.
Well, I'm trying to find out what the issue is. Is the issue financial, and that we're trying to move to a place where it's more, less expensive? Because, again, I wouldn't agree by sending the meetings to Southern Shores or to KDH Town Center. I think this is the place we ought to be, in the schools. So, I don't think the finances have anything to do with it. I think being in the school system is what's important as a Board of Education.
I think one of the main things, other concerns, and I see what you're saying as well, but I think some of the concerns is the amount of work that goes into having to move. We can't go back to not being televised. We can't. And the cost and the amount of stress and pressure it puts on the schools to have to set this whole thing up and have somebody do it. We don't have that person anymore. And I've talked to a couple of administrators and teachers and even some central office employees, and it is taxing. I, we're not going to be out of the school building. We're going to actually, I feel like have a better, I think we'll have a better relationship with the teachers and be able to be more engaged with them when we can go and sit and have lunch with them instead of the food truck that we used to do where half of us could go and half of us couldn't, and we couldn't be at all schools. This way, we get to go and have a lunch with each of the schools prior to the meeting, and we're still in the school. We're just making the business of the board the business of the board. So, I have reservations about it. I know there's going to be some people that are dead-set against it and think it's a horrible idea, and there's some people that are going to think it's a fantastic idea. It actually helps Hatteras, because if we have it at the Commissioners Building, then we can have, they have access to public comment at every meeting.
Well, I'd like to protect the beach. 75% of the kids come from the beach or are attending the beach schools. You have to have some meeting at the beach. I spoke with Ben Sproul, and he said, "No problem. We meet on Mondays and Wednesdays," and he didn't indicate what he did to you, and maybe it wasn't a long enough conversation, but the beach should have at least three meetings a year.
I didn't say he had a problem with it. He just said that we would have to schedule early in advance, is what he said.
And we know what our meetings are going to be years in advance, because we know we meet the second Tuesday of every month. So, we could get with their calendar and our calendar. I just think out of fairness, we need to have some meetings on the beach.
But again, this is the business side. This isn't the interaction side with the students and the staff.
Look at all the parents that are here. If you lived in Duck, would you come all the way? It would take you an hour or more to get to Manio for a 5 o'clock meeting. These parents came today. I'm just saying, it needs to be a fair field so that everybody, if they want to come, it's not as far.
But it does give Hatteras a better option to communicate their needs, because now they can, don't have to drive two hours up to wherever it is. They can go to the President's Center and place their public comment there.
I'm not saying that Hatteras, Hatteras should have two meetings a year as well. They have two schools.
Isn't that historically what we gave Hatteras, two meetings a year anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's why I think we're here today, to give Hatteras at least one of their two meetings a year.
I don't really think money is the issue. That's not the problem. It's the staffing. I thought I was, sorry. It's the staffing part of it. It's everybody that has to stay in all the schools way later than they should. And by the way, I find this really difficult and gems. It's really hard to underst-- that's right. You can't hear me, right? It's echoing.
But my thought is if we use the KDH Town Hall, they're set up. And I watched one of their meetings to hear the sound and see the quality of their taping, and it's perfect.
They said we could. We just have to schedule in advance.
Right. I'm just saying, I would like a consideration of the Town Hall or some other building on the beach. It doesn't have to be a school, because I totally understand the implications of how hard that is, but I think we can come up with some solutions for that.
I agree. But I think it's worth, I think it's worth a shot. So, if we're going to move forward, we need--
I need a motion on the floor?
To--
To have a central-located area and have us reach back out to KDH in--
Set a date.
We go ahead and set up a date today, tonight, a date, whether it be January, February, March, April, May, so we can contact KDH and see if we can be on their schedule on that particular meeting. You'll see in the back of your agenda packet, we're going to go over and talk about our board meetings, because we've got to reschedule one for next month. So, we already know we have them scheduled out for the year, which we've always done that, okay? And we can still do that, but without asking, having been here right now telling me that December or January is open, I don't know. He just told me that that facility is used a lot, and he'd be glad to work with us, but we'd have to give them a lot of notice.
Is there a fee to use a Commissioner's Room?
No, there is not.
None at all?
None at all.
Okay.
And I do not know if there's a fee for KDH. I did not ask that. I don't think it would be.
No, I don't think so. He didn't say so.
Oh, yeah. Ben would have told me as well. So, I don't think that's it. So, if you look, if you look back on the end of the agenda, you'll see the calendar. So, to be on the safe side, we could look at March 14th, 2023, and that'd give us and KDH plenty of time to look at their schedule, and we could have it in KDH on March 14th.
Chairman Tiddy.
I would also suggest that if you're going to have it at Kitty Hawk Elementary, that it be on the beach that day as well.
Well, I'm just saying, we could do the tour of Kitty Hawk that day. Whatever day it is, we do the tour, and then we go to the meeting, just like we do anywhere else, like we're planning to do now. We're going to do the tours and highlights the day of our board meeting, but we're going to leave from the board tours and highlights to go to the central location to have our board meeting.
And I'm just asking that two or three of the tours or of our board meetings per year be on the beach. So, you're only suggesting one?
That's what I'm suggesting, but, you know.
Out of the whole year?
Out of the whole year. There'll be one down here.
75% of the kids come from the beach.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ask Georgia to reschedule all the upcoming meetings for the first Tuesday of each month in the Board of Commissioners' meeting hall.
Without any other dates, any other location? One in Hatteras?
One in Hatteras, for sure, yes.
And one at the beach, is that what you're?
I don't think we--
No, I mean--
Just my opinion.
If that's your motion, that's what--
That was my motion.
All right, so please repeat your motion so we know, clarify that.
Can you restate the motion, just so we can hear it?
Yeah, we're going to see, if you would.
I move that we request Georgia to reschedule all the upcoming board meetings at the Dare County Commissioners' Building and still have one meeting in Hatteras.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Susan, asking Georgia to reach out and have our board meetings located at the Commissioners' Office in Manio, all but one, and that'd be one in Hatteras. So, motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Woody. Any further discussion? All in-- Frank, do you have any, anything you'd like to say?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Does he have anything to say?
I, you're broken up. I don't know if I'm getting through. I kind of agree with Margaret that we should try to have some additional time for the beach because of the mass numbers, and I also think we need to do something to possibly beef up our staff, because I don't think our bench is very deep to continue this.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hold up. Hold up. I'd like to, I think we should amend it to include one at the--
Then you have to vote on this and then revote.
Yep.
Okay.
She's right. You have to vote on the motion on the floor. Sorry. You have to vote on the motion on the floor.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Frank?
Nay.
Opposed. I'm nay.
I'm nay. I'm nay.
So, four to three.
So, I would like to make a motion--
Four to three, motion fails, right?
Yep, four to three.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we have Georgia reschedule the meetings for the second Tuesday of every month at the Commissioners' Building in Manio, and to also include one on the beach in Kill Devil Hills and one in Hatteras annually.
So, now we have a motion on the floor from Mary Lynn, having the board meetings at Commissioners' Office, other than one in Hatteras and one in Kill Devil Hills.
Second.
Second by Susan. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Five to two. Thank you all so much.
Just for my own clarity, the one meeting in Hatteras, is that this meeting for this year?
It probably will be.
Just have to see how scheduling goes when Georgia gets into it. But meaning the next meeting will be, next, November's meeting will be in the Commissioners' Building?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on unfinished business is discussed regarding home-school students' participation in Dare County Schools' sports. So, we ask that Rachel reach out and do a little homework research on other school policies on home-schools, and Rachel, if you have that information for us tonight?
I sure do. So, I did look at much of what's been talked about here tonight, having to do with the Athletic Association, and it is accurate that the Athletic Association put that to the local education agencies. I also looked and found that the School Boards Association had a recommended policy for athletic participation by home-school students. This is just a model. It's not something you have to follow. It's just an option. And that policy has some parameters for home-school student participation in athletics. They have to be, students have to be duly enrolled in accordance with the school system's enrollment and assignment policies and procedures, and they would be eligible to participate in high school or school athletics if they comply with some parameters. One is they have to present a home-school card from the Division of Non-Public Education for the previous and current years, as well as a transcript, an attendance record, and immunization records that would be required for them to be on campus. The student must submit proof that the student's been enrolled in a registered home-school for 365 days prior to participation in athletics. Prior to the first date of practice, the student must provide the results of nationally standardized achievement test taken within the last year that indicates the student was on grade level at the time the test was taken. The student has to participate in a class schedule that is at least one half of the assigned school's instructional day. At least one class has to be taken on campus each semester. The student must pass all classes in which they are enrolled at the assigned school in order to maintain athletic eligibility. Once duly enrolled and deemed eligible to participate in athletics, the student must maintain continuous dual enrollment. Failure to maintain continuous dual enrollment renders the student ineligible for athletic participation for 365 days. The student has to notify the principal of the assigned school in writing of the student's intent to try out for an athletic team at least 10 days prior to the first practice date of each sport season in which the student wishes to participate. Failure to comply with the requirement renders the student ineligible for that sport for that season, and the student has to comply with all other applicable North Carolina-- And the student has to comply with all other applicable North Carolina High School Athletic Association rules and regulations regarding eligibility for athletic participation. Duly enrolled student who transitions to a full enrollment in a school system will then be governed by the High School Athletic Association as being a high school athlete in a North Carolina public high school. So those are the parameters that the model policy from the School Board Associate, North Carolina School Board Association put out governing, we talked about athletics last time, but governing athletic participation by homeschool students. And you can find, find that online, if y'all want to look for that, you can find that model policy online.
Now, does it have to be dual enrollment? I mean, is that some-
How does dual enrollment work?
So you would have, you have to have a dual enrollment policy that allows for a student to be enrolled part-time in the district.
And would they have to take core classes? Or could it be like a music class or a gym class?
The only parameter that the high school, that this, this model School Board Association policy has is that they have to take a half a course load. They don't have to take all those classes on campus. So they could take, let's say you offer, I'm just arbitrarily choosing things as an example. But let's say you offer, you know, French III through the North Carolina Virtual Public High School of some way. They can register through you for that. They could do, there's a number of ways they could take-
They have to be on campus for at least one class.
They have to be on campus for at least one class.
And that class could be food or it could be-
Enrolled in half a, in half a coursework level for that.
Okay.
Now, that's the suggested policy.
That is.
Do we have to follow that policy?
This policy, you have a lot of discretion.
Yes, a model.
I'm just giving you, in terms of your options, I'm bringing you, here's kind of a starting point, was the School Board Association, here's their recommended policy. So that, I went and did the research that you asked me to about whether or not it's true that the LEA had the complete control basically of how it works. And then what options would you have? Here is the model policy, but you have discretion. You, you have a lot of discretion in those circumstances.
We don't want the dual enrollment policy or suggestion in that.
You don't have to have homeschool participation in athletics all the way up to the opposite end of that spectrum. So you have wide discretion in how to handle the participation.
Did you get a chance to look at other, because there's other counties in the, in the state that do allow it?
There are some other counties in the state that allow it.
Do you know anything about how that?
I could have a list. I pulled down some of their policies if the board wants us to see some of those samples as well.
Now, what about, you know, currently right now Derrick County Schools requires all of our children in extracurricular activity take drug tests. Would, would the homeschool student follow that same guideline?
I think that the way we've treated that for students in the school district is that, that, because I remember when that drug testing policy came into effect. In fact, did some presentations here for you all on that. And the way we've always treated that was that was a contingency. You had to agree to the drug testing in order to be eligible to participate in sports. And my advice would be that that should be applied fairly across the board to all athletic participants in the interest of fairness.
Well, I think the dual enrollment thing is just going to make it impossible for a homeschooler to be able to participate. But that's my view.
Not necessarily, because I, I know, because that NCVPS, it's, it's, it's North Carolina voca-, what is it? North Carolina?
Virtual Public.
Virtual Public School? They, my son took a class that way. Where he came to school, but he's taking the class online, but he was in the classroom and there was a facilitator there. But he, he could have done that, if he was homeschooled, he could enroll in a NCVPS class.
But this requires that you be, so you can enroll in, in the virtual public school, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Blackstock, but you can enroll in the virtual public school through a couple different avenues. This model policy from the School Boards Association requires that the student would be enrolled in half a course level through the Derrick County Schools. They would only have to be on campus for one of them, but they would have to take, if you followed this model policy, then they would have to take half of, half of the course load for that grade level through the Derrick County Schools. They don't have to take them all on campus if there's a way to offer that, if the district offers them off campus. Now, in Derrick County, it might be harder because if you don't offer a lot of off-campus virtual kind of options, then that may make it harder for students. So you just have to look at what, what would those options be? And each parent would have to look for their own situation, I would think, when they looked at participation. Is, is my child, if you adopted a policy like this, is my child going to be able to enroll for half a course load of credits in the school system?
Well, I, I know it's a model, but it's a rather onerous model.
It's very specific.
And the fact is, is that I want the homeschool kids treated like the in-school students for purposes of athletics. And, and I know when you go out for a team, you don't give 10 days' written notice that you're coming out for the team. You show up when tryouts are there. And it just seems, like I said, making parents and students jump through, again, it's something that we can consider, but I'm kind of telling you where I'm coming from, where the homeschoolers ought to have that same ability as our in-school students, to act in the band, the plays, and so on and so forth, for the reasons that the speakers gave today. And the other thing I'll say too, is parents make that decision whether they homeschool their children or not. I don't want the kids punished for the decisions made by the parents. And, and that's exactly what seems to be the, the idea of not allowing students to, to actively participate in athletics band or things of that nature. They're, they're citizens of their county, just like everybody else, so. I, I would like the least restrictive model that we could, we could do to allow students to participate in those various functions.
But I wouldn't leave it with athletics. I mean, you've got after-school clubs, you've got all kinds of other activities. That's going to benefit the student. I mean, we need, whatever policy would come up, we need to be able to address all that.
What about, what about schools that are like first-flight high schools at capacity? So what is that, how does that work for them with enrollment?
Well, that's going to go bump back to any dual enrollment. You'll have to also look at your dual enrollment policy because it may be that those students would not be permitted to enroll at first flight because they are at capacity.
So they would have to maybe enroll in Hatters or Manio?
Well, and that goes to your assignment. You have, you really have wide berth to develop this policy any way you want to. But what, what the model policy refers to is going back to your dual enrollment and your assignment policies that you already have in place. In other words, a child might be eligible, a homeschool child might be eligible for athletics at the high school that would be their, their high school if they were enrolled in traditional public school in the Derrick County Schools.
We currently, we currently do that with pre-K right now. We have students that are in a pre-K program that lives on Roanoke Island or the Derrick Mallin, but the seat was open at Nag's Head Elementary. So the parents have to take them to Nag's Head Elementary.
That's because Kitty Hawk doesn't offer pre-K.
No, I'm talking about the, the children that live on Roanoke Island or Derrick Mallin. Because Manio is full, they didn't have enough room, but we had vacancy at Nag's Head Elementary, so the child, the child goes to Nag's Head. So that's how that would be the same with first-flight high school at capacity. If we do, it would, that child would have the opportunity to go to Manio.
But that would be only if you had the dual enrollment option in the policy.
Right.
So I, I, I think the dual enrollment is just, it just makes it too difficult for a parent to try to get their student to play after-school sports.
How about let the board give the authority to Mr. Blackstock to work with Rachel and the three high school principals on a policy that will work? Because they're, they're the ones out there. These principals see it, excuse me, see it every day. And I think that feedback needs to come back to Mr. Blackstock.
Well, isn't there, isn't there a benefit to not having the dual enrollment? If first flight is busy and-
Yeah, but then you still have to keep track of them discipline.
I understand that, but, but the fact is, is they're not, they're not enrolling at first flights and they're not counted as a student at first flight.
I think, yes, I think we'd like to see some feedback from Doc, from Mr. Blackstock. However, I, I kind of, I do want to make a motion that the Policy Committee work towards coming up with a policy that will effectively and efficiently allow homeschool students in Derrick County to participate in our schools.
And David, I totally agree with you.
And present it to the board at the next meeting.
Hold on, we don't have a policy committee. Just a policy team. It's not a committee.
Oh.
No, it's not a committee.
It's not a committee, it's a team.
I think before we go down this road, I really appreciate that you said we need to contact and get together with all the high school principals.
Yes.
First flight right now is at 965, built for 800. And I really think the input of the ADs and the principals, so we can work out any kinks before-
I mean, it's like tonight-
But I think we need to be committed to making, figuring out a way to make this happen.
And I think we can.
And let me just, as a point of parliamentary procedure, is, is there a motion on the floor? Because I think you would need a second and then a, or are you just saying your plan to make the motion?
I'm pulling my motion. We're still having discussion.
That sounds fine, I just want to make sure we're following procedure.
They've done an outstanding job giving some information to the board, okay?
Sure.
That's, that's, I give them total respect. But that's, that's, that's information that I personally did not know. And I don't know how many y'all knew about it, but it's an opportunity, that information to come back and have Mr. Blackstock and the three principals work together and come up with a, a plan to present back to us.
I, I, I think you need to expand that to the middle schools too. Because this is going to apply for middle school students playing sports too.
Good idea.
So, I mean, but, you know, my view is, you know, if you're homeschooled and you want to participate in a sport, I think we should do our best to try to allow them to participate in a sport or after-school club, you know, whatever it may be.
And that's why I think that we need to get a good policy to cover the, the schools and also cover the students that be in homeschool. And I don't think right now tonight would be a good idea to do anything other than having Mr. Blackstock and his team get together.
I also think there's, time is somewhat of the essence in the sense that parents are looking to bring their kids into winter sports that's coming up. They don't want to be sitting on the sidelines waiting for us to do what we should be doing, which is making a decision about this.
But I don't think it's something you can just rush right through.
Do the winter sports start in January or February? I obviously was not an athlete, so I'm thinking-
Say that again?
The winter sports would be looking at-
They start first of November, pretty much.
Okay.
Tryouts are first of November, middle of November for middle school.
Well, you're definitely not going to have a policy revision by the first of November because y'all are not going to meet again. So it may be just, it may be, the, the next season would begin in January, February.
Yeah, it'd be primary school.
So I, I do think that it's completely reasonable if you, if someone made the motion to have Mr. Blackstock work with the School Board Attorney and the middle and high school administrators to present some options that would begin homeschool participation for, in, for the, at the start of the next, at the start of this calendar year in January. We could do that by then. I don't know how you would have a policy in place by November 1st.
Well, I, I would agree with that. I would, I would see, I can see that that's difficult, but I'm with Joe. Like, we're, we're here, we, we should be working towards this quickly.
We are, but we just, we, we've got to come up with a policy, Mary Lynn.
I just, I guess I just want to know that the board's committed to making this happen.
Yeah, we just, we, like she said, we need a motion, we need a motion on the floor to have Mr. Blackstock and his team at the secondary and middle school level to work with Rachel on getting this process started. And have something by the January board meeting to present to the board.
Second.
I just need a motion, I didn't-
You can make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second by Margaret.
I'm going to second your motion. I just want us to have everything tight so that we don't get into this and we didn't think of a situation. And I think we just need to look at everything so it's, it's good for the parents of the kids who are going to be coming into the schools and the schools.
I agree.
So let me, let me ask a discussion in terms of, so Mr. Blackstock's supposed to report to us?
By January meeting?
That's two months.
Yeah, so, so that seems to be pretty-
I wasn't suggesting we report back by January. I was suggesting you could take action by January, so that gives us-
Have a policy ready to present to the board for, for approval.
Okay.
But can we get updates?
Sure, absolutely.
At the next meeting?
I don't know Mr. Blackstock's schedule, but we can certainly, your next meeting is a month away. I would think we could get together before then.
I know you have nothing else, nothing else to do.
It, it's a very complex issue. I mean, and part of it has to do with, with all of the regulations we have for eligibility with our current students and making sure that the, the eligibility requirements for homeschool are comparable to that and not-
There should be uniformity, I agree with that.
To make sure that there's, there's clarity on that so that when we, when we develop a policy, it's actually something we can implement.
I, I just hope, there's, my mindset sometimes is that a lot of this is based on finance, financial stuff. And, and I don't want to be at financial. I want to give the kids the opportunity to participate, whether they're homeschooled or they're in school.
Because they're members of our community and they're going to go off and come back and we want them to be as-
I, I do, because if these, if children have to be dual enrolled, are the schools getting money for that enrollment?
For, yes, if they're enrolled.
Yeah, okay, so. Well, I understand that, but I'm, I'm saying that's, that might be the compulsion for that requirement in the model. And then I don't want that to be a factor in determining whether or not a student is allowed to play athletics or band or anything else. I, I want it to be strictly, parents make a desire to enroll their kids for the purposes of athletics or band or so on and so forth, even though those kids are homeschooled.
So I think you have a motion and a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank y'all. We've got a new business, which is policy manual updates. Rachel?
That's me. So the first set of policy manual updates, they're, they're kind of divided in twos. And we're, we're trying to catch you up on a few things as far as the, the School Board Association recommended revisions to policies. So the first set, set one, it's being recommended that you go ahead and approve those on first reading, that you suspend your policy that requires two reading and approve those on first reading, mostly because the first one is a clerical change because your elections will have people seated in December and not July. And the second one is a title, the second and the third have to do with Title IX issues. And we just want to make sure we get those adopted quickly as the school year rolls on and Title IX issues might arise. So that first set, we're proposing that, you're recommending that you adopt those on first reading. The second set, it's on here just for first reading.
Is 2340 on for adopting right away?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Do I have a motion on the floor to waive the second reading on set one policy?
So moved.
Can I do that?
Second by Margaret. Second by Margaret. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Now, we need a motion on the floor to accept the policy.
I make a motion that we accept policy 2230, 1710, 4020, 7230, 1725, 4035, 7236.
Motion by Margaret, second.
Second.
Second by Susan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Now, we're going to just do this, the second reading next month for-
That's right, that second set will come to you again next month for the second reading.
Okay. Next item of new business will be the revised Board of Education meeting schedule, if you will.
Wait, we have-
It gives you, we're going to, you got it, this is going to be the second reading, the second set. It's not for this month.
On 2340, it, it has at the very end, closed session and action. Does that make any difference since we have our closed session before the board meeting? Should that be flipped or does that, does it make any difference?
Show me where you are, Margaret.
Page five of, of 2340. Page five of 2340.
Okay, let me get there, just one second.
It just, it just shows that our closed session is at the end of the meeting. And I didn't know because we've moved it to the front of the meeting if the order should be changed.
So you're talking about on line 161, 14 closed session, mhm. So-
Yeah, line 14 and 15.
Right. So you can do that either way, as long as you adopt an agenda at both places.
That's fine.
So this will generally be the order of business. You can, we can amend that if you want, or you can leave, as long as those items are included in your usual agenda, you will have a closed session.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you. So, um. Yeah, this is just first reading on this, on the second set of policies. And now we're going to go to item B on new business, which will approve the revised Board of Education meeting schedule for 2022, 2023. And that's basically is the date of next month. We had it for November the 8th, which is, which is Election Day. And- And school will be closed, even though we're not having the business meeting at the school next month, but the Commissioner's Office will be used there for voting. And I did talk with Mr. Alton, and the 9th of November is available for us for our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reschedule the November 8th, 2022 board meeting to November 9th, 2022, at the Commissioners' Building.
Motion by Mary Lynn.
Second.
Second by Frank. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Frank, since it's kind of hard to hear you, I'll try to go ahead, do you have any comments, do you have any comments tonight for the public?
He didn't hear you.
Frank, we're going to Item Number 11, board comments, you have anything for tonight?
No, I just wish I was there, because this is really hard to hear.
I understand, well, I hope you get feeling better. Woody?
No, I'm good.
Margaret?
I'm good, thank you Cape Hatteras Elementary School for hosting us, and hi Beth.
I'd like to thank the community for coming out to observe the meeting. I just enjoyed the public comments and finding out what the issues are in Hatters and what people are thinking in terms of the school system.
Mary Lynn?
I'm good. Thank you all for coming.
Susan?
I'm good too, thanks for having us.
Mr. Blackstock, you have anything? I don't have anything either, thank y'all so much for hosting and good seeing the folks from Hatters Island here tonight. With that being said, do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
Motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Mary Lynn, second by Susan. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Frank?
Aye. Thank you, Holly.